Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plain City Council Business Meeting. It is Monday, August 25th at 7:00 PM and I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I am looking for a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Burek. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Do we have any visitors to be heard this evening Administrator Coleander? Okay. No visitors to be heard. Next, I do not see Representative Robbins. So we will move on to item six, the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes city council workshop meeting minutes from July 28th, city council business meeting minutes from July 28th, city council special workshop meeting minutes from July 31st, August 11th, city council workshop meeting minutes, and a St. Boniface Miniaturist Area Lions Club gambling license. Looking for a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Francis, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Are there any further discussion or questions regarding the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, five to zero. Next item of business this evening is accounts payable and I will turn that over to Administrator Coleander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Our city checks for the month of August totaled $245,837.99. There was one question on those, or actually if it was for the ACH payments, so I'll just go there first. ACH payments were $12,384.46. One question on the credit card bill was donuts for the QuickTrip groundbreaking. It was just miscoded. It was actually for cookies for council, the last one that we had, not for the donuts. Those were supplied by QuickTrip.
I was glad to hear that.
And then the street project totals $9,794.50. So grand total of 268,016.98.
Alright. Thank you Administrator Coleander. Before I look for a motion to accept all those, does anyone have any questions for staff regarding either the city bills, ACH bills, or the 2024 street project bills? Hearing none, all in favor of the approving accounts payable, including city bills, ACH bills, 2024 street project bills, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Meeting, motion passes, five to zero. Next item of business before us this evening is our staff reports. We are grateful for all of our staff and the work they do. Last month they were here in person as they come quarterly. This month, all reports have been received and are in the packet. Administrator Coleander, do you have anything you'd like to say regarding administration and finance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. We do keep getting questions about the Hawk pedestrian signal. That part is still ordered and we are somewhat impatiently waiting for it. If anybody noticed, they did go out and put some additional pedestrian crossing signs, a sign on the button sign that says it isn't working, it's out of order, proceed with caution. So hopefully that has helped a little bit. And then one other thing to note too, just to give everybody a heads up, the state water testing fee from the Department of Health will be increasing from $2.45 to $3.81 per quarter. Everyone will start to notice that bill on 2026 first quarter bill that they get in April next year. That's all I had.
And just to be, just a point of clarification on that Administrator Coleander, is that money will not be going to the city?
Correct. That money goes to the Department of Health.
And it is a quarterly increase, so... Just want people to be aware. Okay, with that, does any council members have questions for staff regarding the administration report? With that, I am looking for a motion to receive all staff reports as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Francis.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Burek. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, the ayes have it, five to zero. We have no old business to come before us this evening. We do have some new business. We will start with beginning with a hearing for the dispute of a nuisance violation at 1764 Howard Avenue. And I'm going to turn that over to Assistant City Administrator, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. Tonight, Mr. Gerald Esnoff is here to discuss his property regarding a pollinator garden, or a possible pollinator garden in his front yard. Some of the background for today. On July 2nd, staff cited Mr. Esnoff with the nuisance violation at his home at 1764 Howard Avenue for tall vegetation and noxious weeds. A follow-up inspection did take place on July 14th, confirmed the property remained out of compliance. On July 18th, a notice was issued advising that abatement could occur if corrective action was not taken. Mr. Esnoff, who is here, requested a hearing before city council asserting that the vegetation qualifies as a pollinator garden and should be exempt from state and city code, which allow for managed natural landscapes and planned intentional, that is planned, intentional, and maintained. Tonight's hearing is providing the platform for a hearing for Mr. Esnoff where he can plead his case that his property qualifies as a pollinator garden. To this point, staff's findings, inspections show that the vegetation was not maintained or intentional in appearance and included tall grasses and weeds. While some non-noxious plants like daisies were present, staff determined the yard did not meet the criteria of a managed natural landscape. And with that, the council, tonight, the council is asked to decide whether to recognize the property as a pollinator garden and allow it to remain or to enforce abatement under city code, which costs accessible to the property if corrective action is not taken.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, for that synopsis. Mr. Esnoff, please come to the podium and introduce yourself and speak.
I am Gerald Esnoff.
Okay. You can pull out the table. Mr. Larson, you can pull out the podium side two to give him more room.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for hearing my point of view. I have a presentation that should only take around five minutes at this time. If it's okay with you, I would like to offer documentation with each point I have to make. For 10 years, upon approval from my neighbors, I started beekeeping in the city of Maple Plain. And that's a proof, my honey had a very good crop this year. I also, at that time, needed to do some landscaping in my front yard. So the landscaper laid dark growing dirt for planting. I decided to, instead of replanting grass, to purchase an assortment of pollinator plants with the intention of having my yard a full arrangement of pollinator plants to help support bees and other pollinators. I did not have a yard of grass that I just left unattended to return to its natural state. I spent money for this project. By conversing with the city of Maple Plain through the years and receiving approval from the city of Maple Plain, I managed the growing season by first mowing my whole yard in the spring to allow dandelions, which are the first vital pollinator plant that bees need, to begin the year. And this is a picture of what that might look like. Would you, would I give it to you or?
You can give it to Mr. Larson, please.
So that's what the beginning of the year looks like. Yeah. And I believe that there does not violate the toxic weed ordinance of, you know, 6-28 or the state statute 412925. Well, after the dandelions have provided bee support, I mow them down to allow the various mid-spring summer pollinator plants to come up. Before these pollinator plants begin to bloom, they do not appear like flowering plants. That is the picture that Assistant Kevin Larson took of my yard and then sent me, sent it to me with a notice about the overgrown toxic weed ordinance. And I think you have that picture or?
Are you referencing that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, right there.
Yes, we do.
Let's see, where was I? As I have said, I planned and maintained pollinator plants in my yard for 10 years. You cannot predict how pollinator plants will show up each year. So I allow them to first bloom and areas where there is little growth, I maintain my yard by mowing those areas down. And these are examples. This was a very good year, the first picture, and these are present year photos. So at the end of the year, I mow everything down so the seeds will regrow the next year. Now, Mr. Larson sent a picture of my yard along with a noxious weed nuisance violation notice, not knowing that my pollinator plants had not bloomed yet. When he sent me the notice, I called him and talked with him about coming over to show me what he was talking about. He chose not to do that, but rather send me a final notice with the same picture, not a new picture of my yard. And now that it's beginning to be fall, these are pictures of my current yard. I wish I had that one. Oh, anyways, these should do.
That's your yard today?
Yeah. Yeah, as you can see. Let's see. Yeah, as you can see, I still have some pollinator plants, white clover, one-eyed Susans, chicory, milkweed, et cetera, that have not gone to seed. When they do go to seed, I will mow them down. So finally, I have been a good citizen of Maple Plain for 40 years. I have not gotten any complaints from my neighbors about my pollinator plants all that time. My neighbors support me in my beekeeping and my pollinator plants. I am able to share my honey crop with my neighbors and with you if you'd like to keep that. I believe my planning and my intention and how I maintain my yard is a positive to the bee community and in line with the city. And I don't see anything in the, in the code, code 2628 about a garden. You refer to having a pollinator garden. There's nothing that says you have to have a garden, at least as far as I know. And I'm just going by what the, what the city's code says precisely. And so I would contend that as long as I keep weeds under six inches, as long as they're not toxic, my pollinator plants should be allowed to grow. And that's my, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Esnoff. Does council have questions for Mr. Esnoff or Mr. Larson? Councilmember DeLuca?
Kevin, is there, in the middle of the property, in the tall area, is there some debris or things in the middle of that?
Thank you. Councilmember DeLuca? It appears that there is some debris behind that, those bushes or whatever is in the back. I can't actually tell what's in the back, but it does appear like there is some.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
That's not debris, that's logs. I have like three logs, big logs. I cut down the tree and decided to have those as ornaments. I also have a antique big wheel sharpener thing. And then the tall vegetation, maybe I, maybe you could see, well, yeah. I think I see a little better here. That's, that's more pollinator plants, just taller.
And why do you allow the plants to grow out into the street?
Well, they're overlapping into the streets. The ones you see right there, those are white clover. And so again, is that what you're referring to, sir?
One of the pieces, yes.
Yes. Well, that's white clover that I didn't know there was an ordinance about keeping. It's not in the street, it's on the curb. Is there somewhere else you'd like to point out?
Why are you allowing that to grow on the cement?
Well, I would certainly cut that if that's a, I wasn't aware that allowing a plant that's a pollinator to drift over onto a curb, is that what you're saying again, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'd be happy to trim that. I will be cutting all that down in probably about three weeks. And what is the other one you're referring to? You said there's a couple areas. I mean, would you say this is in compliance, sir?
No.
In what way is it not in compliance?
Well, I'm not going to debate that with you. I'll ask.
Well, you have to debate it with me because I'm here to talk about this.
I'll ask you the questions. Why are you allowing your plants to crawl out onto the street?
Alright, I will cut those because I wasn't aware that, I guess I wasn't even aware they were doing that.
When did you mow the, the grass?
This?
Yes.
Probably two days ago.
Interesting timing to this meeting.
Well, and what are you insinuating, sir?
That you've left that in an unmanageable area.
No, it wasn't. It was all mowed down. And would, look at the pictures, would you say those are not qualified? You know, the pictures, they're right there. Can you look at them and tell me what's wrong with them?
The state statute, as I understand it, has three criteria to it that need to be addressed. One is that it is a planned.
And what makes you think I didn't plan it 10 years ago?
Number two, it is an intentional design. And I believe our website has some.
That isn't a law though, that's suggestions, sir. That's suggestions. It's not a law.
Councilmember DeLuca is speaking. When he's done, you will speak.
Okay, thank you.
He gave you the courtesy when you were speaking.
Alright, I will.
One person speaks at a time in this room.
Alright, sir, ma'am.
So.
Thank you.
A, a pollinator garden to qualify must be.
Where does it, I'm sorry. Garden, there is, there's no word garden in the, in the codes and the statutes. There's no word garden in those. Show me where it says garden.
Mayor, I yield my time at this point. I'm not going to argue with him.
Thank you.
I clearly can't carry on a conversation.
Well, sir, I will promise not to speak anymore if you have more to say. I'll back up.
My understanding from the state statute is in order for this qualification to occur, that number one, it must be planned. I don't see where your plan is. Number two, it needs to be very intentional. I can't imagine this vision is intentional in any way. And number three, it needs to be maintained. There is debris in the middle or something in the middle of that. And I don't understand how the debris in the middle contributes to a planned, intentional, and maintained area. I don't see why these leaves, these, you left patches of weeds that are spilling over into the curb and into the public right-of-way and streets. I just don't understand your perspective.
Well, my perspective is that that's not debris, which I stated. And that those are, those are pollinator plants that are going over, but I'm saying I would be happy to cut those if that's part of the code to do that. And again, I want to specify, what does it say in the code? I mean, I have explained that I've managed, I've made a decision to have this and I manage it by when the flowers bloom to mow areas where there is none. I'm not some guy who lives in a trailer who's looking to get away with not mowing his grass.
Councilmember Avizio, your turn to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, sir. Can you tell me what of those plants that you plan are native plants to Minnesota?
Well, the, the one-eyed Susans, I believe are. I guess I wish I had the names of, the milkweed, of course. I think those white daisies are. Not the tall growing ones, but.
Can you tell me which daisies they are? Are they oxy or are they shasta daisies?
I could give you a list, ma'am. Or maybe they are right here.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to see your list, please.
Well, no, this is, this is a list of, and I'm looking for.
Okay.
Where they would be as a.
I guess my question is, when you said you planned this 10 years ago, did you buy a seed packet with all the names of the plants on it? Or did you buy plugs and plant them?
I bought a packet, it was like a, I don't know, a pound or whatever, and spread it around. And then through the years, it kept changing. If you notice, the daisies kind of took over one year. But again, everything that I think you see that's growing, that's bloomed, is a pollinator plant, whether it's a.
A little bit of background, I am a pollinator gardener.
Okay.
So I do understand these things.
Okay.
So we understand. Do you happen to have that seed packet still that has a list of the plants on it?
No.
Okay. So do you believe that the thistle that you have growing in your land be part of that packet? The yellow thistle?
The which ones?
The thistle.
I'm not sure which, did you say the yellow ones?
Yes, that's thistle.
Okay.
I cannot talk.
So thistles, I guess I, I'm not an expert.
Okay.
So that would not qualify.
So I guess my, the concern is, is that there are plants in there that would be considered invasive. I cannot consider, they're noxious because I haven't looked at them all yet. But they're considered invasive and they would probably need to be taken care of if you, to be, you know, a good steward of your land. If you understand.
Yes.
And I would consider those daisies, you got to check on that, whether oxy or shasta. Because those are, one is considered invasive, one's not. I believe the shasas are not.
Are you able to look at that picture and tell, the one with?
No, I'd have to go through and look at it myself. But I understand that when you throw down a seed packet, you get one species one year and then the next year, things do come in, that's pretty prevalent. And mowing things down, usually most people wait till one, do it one time to mow down their thatch and to remove it. So that's, most prairie gardeners would do that way. So that's why I think, that's why it was a little confusing. And the third thing is that you really want to avoid anything in the gutters. Because we are a, our, all our water, all our sewer feeds into the lakes.
Okay.
I believe Independence, is that correct? Or, it doesn't matter. So anytime you have vegetation inside of that gutters, you're promoting and introducing new things into our water systems, our waterways, such as like Independence, which can lead to algae blooms. It can lead to increase in sediment, it can lead to a lot of these things. So we would ask, I would ask as a fellow gardener, that you, you know, maintain those gutters just for the sake of our lakes, okay?
Sure.
As our watershed.
Yes.
And then I would like, encourage you to go back and maybe try to figure out which ones could be considered invasive on your property.
Yeah.
And which may or may not be noxious, so I can't tell, but that one picture looks like you have common tanzi in there, which is a noxious weed from Minnesota. Okay? And that is not going to help your pollinator garden. Matter of fact, it will detract and from the native bees. It's just, I'm more concerned about native bees. I understand you're a honeybee kicker. But we have endangered species that we are trying to help not be endangered, for lack of better terms. So I would encourage that you go through and look and see what might be detracting from what you're trying to promote. I mean, as a lawn de legumes grantee and as a lawn de legumes coach and a native plant coach, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but put a little more thought into it maybe.
Certainly.
That's what I'm trying to say. I have no problem with you having honeybees. Obviously, your neighbors enjoy your product. But I think what we're trying to say is can you go back and reexamine?
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your input and I'd invite you over sometime if you could. Yeah, like I said, I'm not an expert.
I mean, with, as long as I'm allowed to, I'd be happy to help.
Yep.
That is, I'd have to take direction from our city administrator because I don't want to overstep my bounds.
Sure. Yeah, and that's all I'm, I guess I'm looking for. I don't know if there needs to be a decision other than I'll be mowing all of that down and next year, I would like to attempt to do it more in line with how I might be advised.
We do need to give direction tonight, Mr. Esnoff.
Okay.
Are there comments, questions from council? Councilmember Burek?
I understand the.
Thank you.
I understand the scope of the garden as your property, as your front yard. The management of it is mowing it down. Even though, looking at those pictures, I understand the dandelions and how a lot of people would consider them weeds. And, but you have a good pollinator garden, but there are areas that you do need to address.
Okay.
And I think it's just taking a better look at what you're planting.
One thing I would ask, can we clarify that my yard, as long as there's correct plants there, it can be that as opposed to like a squared off little rock garden or something? That, that my whole yard, if all those plants on the yard are in code, that I should be allowed to grow it that way? As opposed to having some plan, which again, I don't see in any code or any statute?
Assistant, Assistant Administrator Larson first and then Councilmember Avizio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To answer your question, just as long as it's planned, intentional, and well-maintained, you can do really whatever you want with your property.
Okay.
And I would like to add that, consider, call it right-of-way here or easement? Okay. There is a space that you need to allow for maintenance from the city on your property, called easement or right-of-way?
Easement?
Okay, sorry. I, from different cities and guys, but anyway, so keep that in mind when you do, when you are planning this, is that right up from the curb up to. when you do, when you are planning this, is that right up from the curb up to 10 feet, you need to, you know, leave for the city. That's, that's been a statute for.
Leave for the city to do what?
Any maintenance, any water lines, any electricity, any electrical lines, any cables, um, that is, you know, any repair, like road repair, I mean, they, I don't.
I'd like, like to clarify, what would my plans have to do with?
Because the, the, they're going to get destroyed, the matter of fact, point of fact, but that's, that's what I'm saying.
Councilmember Arvizo, I think, for bringing that up, I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Colander for clarification from the official.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Arvizo and councilmembers. Um, so 10 feet from the property line back is considered the main, the, the city right of way. It is an easement of sorts that the city maintains to do maintenance and things like that. Um, you can have the natural, um, planned, intentional and maintained plantings in that right of way. They cannot impede on the road. So at the moment they hit the curb line, that's on the road.
Okay.
Sorry, my mistake.
That's okay.
So that's at the top of the curb, it can't, correct, that's that, okay.
Does that help clarify?
It does.
Um, I would also like to bring up unfortunately, Mr. Esno, because I can tell that it's a passion of yours and something that you enjoy doing, that in our city section code four dash four zero eight, which speaks to the limitations on the numbers of animals permitted, beekeeping shall not be permitted within the city limits, and that is in our city code. So that as well is not supposed to be happening at your house.
Is it retro, I mean, back when I applied, they basically said, oh, I just need to converse with my neighbors. And as long as they're okay, that, that would, uh, that would be fine years ago.
Councilmember Arvizo?
Um, do you have documentation of all this?
No. But I, I guess you'd have to decide if I'm telling the truth or not.
I just, that's not.
Administrator Colander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, and Mr. Estenoff?
Esno.
Estenoff. Um, so if you can find where the city had allowed that at one point in time, that would be helpful for your case to keep the bees.
Well, otherwise I have to kill my bees too.
Otherwise, well, you wouldn't have to kill them, but you could rehome them. And I will, I will go back to, uh, the last code that we had was 2015 and the one before that was 1983. And I will check to see what that code says in those versions.
Pretty sure I checked the code when I started beekeeping and just to see if maple plane. And they basically said that, that you check with the neighbors that are around you to make sure that they're okay, so. And so you say you will check that and then confirm if that's true or not, I can keep the bees, if not, I have to get rid of them?
Yep, I will.
All right.
All right, um, any other discussion or questions from council? Comments? I will note that in the packet, there was pictures from, uh, July 23rd as well. And Mr. Esno, um, that does not show a maintained yard again. Um, and there, there have been complaints by other people. We are a complaint-based city. And this was brought to our attention as well. Um, when I look at the pictures and listen to you talk and this does not feel like it was a planned garden. I mean, you're not even able to tell me what's in there and what's invasive and what you have. It does not seem intentional as it's seems each year and each season. It's different and things are changing and moving. And it is clearly, um, has not been maintained, in my opinion, as reflected in growing on the street and the heights and the thistle and the, um, weeds that are in there. Um, so that is where I am personally standing and how I am feeling. Um, is there any further discussion? Does anyone have anything else to say before we look for a motion? Uh, councilmember Birak?
I agree with what you said, Mayor. Um, you know, maintaining it so it is off the roadway is a big thing, but we want to know what you have. I mean, we want to know the plants that you got. That's the way to make your argument for a garden. Right now, what we see is a lot more questionable plants. I understand you have a lot of pollinator plants, but it'd be nice to know the actual name so we have something to look up. Thank you.
Mr. Esno or anyone else have anything to say? Okay, oh, councilmember Francis.
Do you have a sign or anything that says this is a pollinator?
Pardon the weeds, we're feeding the bees.
Yeah.
Or as a off thing, but.
You, you do?
No, it's not an official sign, it's just a.
Okay.
It says pardon the weeds, we're feeding the bees. It's in one of his pictures.
Okay, okay. Because, because when I see it, I just see weeds. When I see a sign that says pollinator garden, then I educate myself as to what there is. And I've seen other pollinator gardens that are organized and you can tell what it is by looking at it. To me, this looks more like it hasn't been mowed and everything's just taken over.
With that then, um, there are two, um, options we have. We can find in favor of Mr. Esno and claim of a pollinator garden. Or we can find in favor of the staff's findings and order the abatement. Do we need to close the hearing before we make?
Could I say one, ask one more thing?
We never open the hearing, right?
The, the plants in the very back that are tall, you're not asking me to cut those down, are you? Those are obviously pollinators, wouldn't you say?
Uh, what I recognize is I recognize Joe Pywood, and I believe can't tell if it's compass plants or if it's a cup plant from the picture. Yeah, I still need closer look at the leaves, sorry. But yes, those are native plants.
Administrator Colander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, kind of going through and, and hearing Mr. Estenoff and, and hearing, uh, councilmember Arvizo's um, knowledge on the pollinator gardens, the landscape. I would, my recommendation would still be the same to find, find in favor of the staff. Um, and have Mr. Estenoff mow everything now. Get it down so that it's not a nuisance. And then I would be very happy as well to work with councilmember Arvizo and you on what does that managed landscape look like? You know, you should know what plants are there. Even if they change over a year, you're responsible to know which ones are there. That's what's intentional and managed. Um, so I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate the kindness and everyone's willingness to help. As, um, councilmember Arvizo especially, I know that's your passion and your training and you're offering those services as a volunteer, so thank you. Administrator Colander, I struggle with you making that offer. We have over 600 homes in this city and have 600 people on a planted pollinator garden. We don't have enough money or time in the day to pay our administrator to go to everyone's home and be helpful. And I know that's hard because it's in your nature, um, so I'm going to respectfully disagree. Um, I'm one of five, so if I'm out of line, please someone, um, check me. But I think there's a difference between you volunteering and councilmember Arvizo. Administrator Colander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I should clarify on that. Um, an opportunity for me to learn more about what a managed, planned and intentional um, vegetation would be. Not saying that I'm going to go out and help everybody plan, but to get together with the first meeting to kind of hear and learn a little bit more for myself, you know, and you know, assistant administrator Larson should probably be in on that conversation so that we learn a little bit more about it. We have another resident that we've been working with. I'd like to get the DNR to come and meet with us just so we can learn more about that, because I think it's becoming more and more common. Not saying that I'm going to help people manage and plan their vegetation.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because that's what I thought I heard. Uh, councilmember DeLuca?
I mean, the issue in front of us tonight is to make a determination of whether the property as it sits right now is in compliance with our s- city codes and our interpretation of state statute. Now, I go back to the things that Kevin, you said at the very beginning. Is it planned? Is it intentional? And is it maintained? So let's walk through those. Is your property planned? When I hear what you're saying about 10 years ago and the seed packet of seeds, I'm not sure that that's planned in the sense that the state statute or our code anticipated. Nevertheless, it's there. Intentionality to it, I look at that like council, or councilperson Connie did. It doesn't appear like it's very intentional. Then we get to main, maintenance. And I think that's where we've seen more of the discussion tonight around maintenance is just more than leave it for the season and mow it when the little flowers go away. Maintenance is knowing what you have, how you have it, where it is, where it's growing, where it's moving out onto, into the streets. What are the plants that are there? You have invasive plants in there, you have some noxious weeds, there are some thistles over there. And you have a number of things that have just volunteered. They didn't start in that little packet that you had 10 years ago. They've just come naturally over the last number of years. That's not maintenance. So in the absence of qualifying in all three of those areas, is it planned, is it intentional, is it maintained? I have no choice tonight, no choice, but to determine that the property as it sits here tonight is not in compliance with our city ordinances or state statute. I have no choice. And as much as I love bees and I love honey, I know bees travel two miles. So it's not just the neighbor next to you that's impacted by that, it's everything. And we do have a little problem with the fact that the bees aren't a part of our city code. Which is a whole nother issue. I just don't think I've got any choice tonight but to determine you're not in compliance with those two things.
Could I ask why it's not in the code or why beekeeping is not allowed anymore? Is there a reason?
Administrator Colander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Minister Estenoff. Um, without going back and looking at previous codes, I wouldn't even begin to be able to give you an answer. I mean, things do change over time, um, in which the, the city adopts um, ordinances as state laws change and things like that, so I wouldn't be able to tell you right now on that. I would have to do some research.
Would you consider that perhaps, having that many cities to allow bees? They, they don't hurt anybody.
As I'm, as I'm going through and doing my research, it's something I'll look at.
I'd encourage you to consider that.
Yeah, and at, at this time, that's a whole separate issue today where, um, we need to deal with the pollinator garden. Okay, all right. Administrator Colander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. With that hearing being concluded, I would recommend to council approval of resolution 2025-0825-02 authorizing the abatement, um, of tall weeds, vegetation, noxious weeds at 1764 Howard Avenue.
All right, looking, looking for a motion?
Just kind of, sorry, I would like to point out, just if that's okay, the ones that are closest to its home are actually considered pollinator plants, are actually native plants of Minnesota. So that would fall underneath the native plant statute of Minnesota.
I understand that, councilmember Arvizo, but we can't, we're not in a position to sit here and go through the yard, plant by plant. We need to decide whether there's compliance or not, so staff has direction.
I would just, I'm asking if we can, the one, close, perhaps hold off on the one, him not mowing down the ones that are actual towards the back by the house, and maybe the ones that are right of way. Yes, because they do get tall. I know that, but.
Administrator Colander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmember Arvizo. Um, at this point, because what the, the argument really is, is it planned, is it maintained? Um, is it intentional? The answer to that is no. It, it violates city code, it violates state statute, so at this time I'd say cut it all down and let's start fresh and new in the spring.
Which is not easy, and I, things take time to grow and it, and it's hard.
Uh, could I add one, one more thing? When I talked to Kevin, he said my concern is about the, the growth in the front, and the back is okay, so that's a contradiction.
Okay, I, Mr., Mr. Esno, as we just explained, we're dealing with the yard as a whole. That's what the hearing has been about, um, not one particular part, so it's regarding the entire address at 1764, the abatement of 1764 Howard Avenue. That has been my understanding since the discussion has started and since the hearing began. So staff has recommended approving resolution dash 2025 dash zero eight twenty five dash zero two authorizing the abatement of 1764 Howard Avenue. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The hearing is closed. Mr. Esno, um, you will need to follow, follow the order for abatement in, in the resolution that was approved tonight, and staff will work with you on next steps. And we appreciate you in taking your time and coming forward and sharing your story this evening.
So you're saying I need to mow it, or you, or you guys are going to come in and mow it?
You will have time. Staff will work with you to give you a reasonable timeframe for you to take care of it. And if not, then they come in and own it's assessed, but maybe I'm wrong, so let me defer to staff for clarification.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Estenoff. Um, according to this resolution, uh, we are asking the council to provide seven calendar days of the date of passing of this resolution, so you would have seven days. And then after that seven days, if it isn't done, then we will come in and do it, and then charge you for the cost.
So just point of clarification, um, so Mr. Esno can plan accordingly. Is that seven business days or is that seven business days? Or seven cali, oh, it's calendar.
Calendar.
Okay, so seven calendar days. Answered my own question, thank you, sorry. Lots of information. All right, thank you again for being here. All right, next item of business for us the evening, this evening is letter C in new business, which includes resolution 2025-802501 to allow for admin to process with past due escrow of collections, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, this stems from the River Oaks application for 1521 Wyman Avenue um, that due to public safety concerns and other factors was, uh, denied um, their land use application. Um, the total cost incurred, uh, through that application process was $5,651.38. Um, multiple attempts have been made to try and contact them. The one time earlier on, um, Chris King, who was the applicant. um, Chris King, who was the applicant, said he has no interest in paying any of those fees. Um, he doesn't think it was fair that he's, still has to pay those even though the application was denied. It says right on the, uh, application that you sign that there will be fees whether it is or is not, um, denied. This is not something that can be assessed to property taxes. You, you have the option of small claims court, which you rack up more fees for, or we can, um, send it off to Pioneer Capital Solutions as a credit bureau, credit, uh, collection agency that I've worked with in past cities. Um, they don't charge a fee, they report to all three credit bureaus. Um, the fee, if they collect, is thirty percent. So it is my recommendation, um, that council give me the approval to place that with the collection agency.
Are there any questions for staff regarding this? Okay, with, oh, did you have?
Just want to be sure and clear, so if we do collect on this, we would get third, seventy percent of that dollar amount. And then if we don't send it over to collections, we're basically at the same point of, it's a loss. So by sending it to collections, we got a chance of getting seventy percent back.
It's unfortunate that we're at this point and having something reported to a credit agency is never a good thing for anyone. But I don't think there's any choice. He hasn't given us a choice of what to do, so I would move that we authorize staff to turn it over to collections.
Alright, there has been movement to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five zero eight twenty-five dash zero-one to authorize the placement of the past due escrow balance with Pioneer Cap- Capital Solutions Incorporated by Councilmember DeLuca. Looking for a second?
I'll second that one.
Second by Councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business to come before us this morning is letter, this evening, is letter D, ordinance three hundred and thirty-four. Um, charging for excessive lift assists, and I will let, um, staff give us the synopsis of this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This has been something that we've been discussing, um, since the River Oaks, uh, application and the public safety concerns, um, that we have with care facilities. We have had the opportunity to meet with Comfort Haven as going in, um, they were agreed with us that, that's, it's ridiculous to have the, you know, me- medical services, emergency services come for lifting patients. So they did add that in their conditional use permit as an agreement. Um, we have had, I have not had, but, uh, Chief DeRose, um, and Sergeant Eberling has had, and Chief Dennison has had conversations with Haven Homes about our intent. Um, and kind of walking them through where the concerns lie that, you know, we're going at two o'clock in the morning to pick someone up off the floor that doesn't have a medical issue. They just need to be lifted up and put back in the chair. Um, that's taxing both on West Hennepin Public Safety and on our fire department. Um, so we are proposing ordinance three thirty-four. Any lift assist or non-emergent fall response to an assisted living facility would get charged two hundred and fifty dollars per call for the first one to five in a year. Five hundred dollars per call for six to eight in a year, and eight hundred and fifty per call for nine or more in a year. Um, the reporting from that would be done, um, with West Hennepin giving us a report at the end of, uh, every month. Um, and the city would then issue, um, a bill to the facility for that, um, sorry, quarterly. Thirty-day payment window, any accounts that are not paid would accrue eight percent annual interest. And then anything unpaid by September first would be certified to Hennepin County for collections. With that, I will stand for any questions, otherwise we recommend approval of ordinance number three three four.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember DeLuca.
Just for clarification then, the, the West Hennepin will determine the non-emergent fall response. If that, if they get a call, they would then determine that was emergent or that wasn't? So you would never probably see the ones that are emergent, correct?
That is correct, uh, so, and right now we've changed s- uh, probably four, five months ago. Um, fire does not automatically get called to any of those nine-one-one calls. Whips goes, and then they determine whether or not fire is actually needed. So they would determine, okay, we've got to this call, it's actually a lif- lift assist, or it's a heart attack and it's an actual emergency. So they would decipher that. I wouldn't see that myself.
No, and the chief is willing to make that determination about this one will be reported or this one won't?
The chief and his officers, yes.
Fine.
And it's my understanding in talking with them, they're already doing that.
Okay.
Because they had data that helped support, um, co- this, um, I just lost the word, this ordinance. Other questions or discussion? Okay, with that, looking for a motion to approve ordinance three, three, four, charging for excessive lift assists.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Francis.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business before us this evening is to review quotes for MEB.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, this came, uh, across my desk, uh, Bergerson Caswell is working on redoing their parking lot. They've added s- uh, a storm drain to collect some of the water. When we get the heavy rainfalls, that entire area is underwater. It's been mentioned before, um, and I had the opportunity, uh, Dave Medina with People Service, uh, invited me to come take a look for myself at the, at the problem. Um, and the drainage ditch, um, that is supposed to drain all of the water from the ditches on Poplar are supposed to go down, uh, drainage ditch along industrial and then underneath the road to swamp, basically. But the water can't get there. The water goes to that, uh, outlet, and there's probably about three and a half to four feet of just sludge, so it just sits there and then it builds up. It doesn't actually drain anywhere. So what they're proposing is digging out the ditch lines. So that way the, the sludge is taken out, the grass is taken out, and crowning the road a bit so that the water drains off appropriately. With the improvements that Bergerson Caswell is doing to their parking lot, and the improvement of that, I think will truly help the, the water issue that we have there. And I'm hoping that it will dry up part of that, uh, gravel road as well, because there's some spots that are kind of mushy all the time. And thinking that this will hopefully help with that problem as well. So I also got a quote for the Rainbow Park parking lot. Um, at the time of, of writing this, um, I didn't have my wonderful update about Rainbow Park um, that I provided you guys, um, this last week. So I, I wouldn't even look at the Rainbow Park parking lot, uh, portion at this time with some of the work that might be coming up. The quote that we got from MEB Enterprises for Poplar and Willow Streets was twenty thousand two hundred and fifty. Um, I recommend that we use our capital improvement, uh, from our stormwater fund to, um, clean that up and fix that issue.
Thank you, Administrator Colander. Questions?
And just for my edification though, the Rainbow Parking Lot?
Correct, so there was a, uh, frost boil, um, in the parking lot. Garbage trucks kind of going in, doing the three port, point turns, kind of tore it up even more.
Got it.
So we've been looking at.
Okay.
When do we patch that, when do we fix that?
There are cones around it, but.
Correct, there are cones around it.
Other questions regarding, um, the Poplar and Willow Streets MEB quote? I think it's the right time to do it, I mean, with Bergerson Caswell making the investment in their parking lot, uh, the potential to help the gravel road, uh, getting water in the right spots is always a good thing. So I think it'd be a missed opportunity if we didn't do it. Councilmember Birak?
Yeah, that's a low area around our, our city, and anything that we can help with drainage is going to help that region.
Alright, with that, are any other discussion, comments, or questions? Okay, looking for a motion, um, to accept the quote from MEB for the work to be done on Poplar and Willow.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Francis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of new business to come before us this evening is to look at the painting quotes, um, for the fire department. And staff has made a recommendation, so I'm going to turn that over to Administrator Colander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, we had presented a quote, I believe it was at a workshop, um, to paint the fire hall. Um, we, uh, got two other additional quotes. Um, Varsity Painters is the lowest bid at thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty. Mike Johnson Painting is seventeen thousand five hundred, um, and that was the one that we had, uh, previously. The third, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Was twenty-two one.
Thank you. The third one was, uh, twenty-two thou- a little over twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, I was asked the question, why not go with the lowest bidder? Um, one of the reasons is because they are local, and we want to support local businesses. Um, the bid from Johnson Painting, um, has more extensive prep than the Varsity Painters bid, which was the lowest one. They're providing for, uh, three colors, um, including, um, all of the doors in the Johnson bid than Varsity Painters. Um, Johnson Painting has, uh, is a little bit more comprehensive, it includes any stucco wood, windows, overhangs, um, things like that that need painting, whereas Varsity Painters was very specific. The Varsity Painters, which was the low bid, they had exclusions for, uh, doors and windows. Um, whereas Johnson Painting has no problem painting the doors. They didn't exclude those from their bid to say that there would be more, um, what's the word I'm looking for, change orders if we wanted them to do those. The only other thing that we noticed too, Varsity Painters has just a general workmanship guarantee. Uh, Mike Johnson, um, it includes our final inspection and making any corrections, um, without additional costs if we see that they need to be done.
Thank you, Administrator Colander, um, yes, because it is our job, and I know we talked a little bit about, I had asked you, why would I not go with the lowest res- lowest bidder? And we talked about responsible bidding and making sure things were all the same. It sounds like after you've done some research today, it looks like with Mike Johnson, as you've already stated, there'll be three colors, they'll do all the doors and windows, um, there'll be all the, um, the wood, everything hanging. Things will be done from beginning to end, completed, when they leave. Not just the big parts of the building are going to be done. And a quality product as well, and, um, shouldn't expect any change orders? Should be the entire job from beginning to end with no change orders?
Correct.
Questions, comments?
How did we get, or, let me back up. What did we put in the RFP that they bid on? Because I am seeing differences between one does a door, one doesn't do a door, one does the flat stuff, one doesn't do that. What was in the RFP?
Uh, Council, Administrator Colander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Luca, uh, we did not do an RFP, it's under the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold.
So we.
So it was just going out, asking, hey, you want to bid on this, this is what we need to have done.
And the lesson here might be, I mean, even though it's under a twenty-five thousand dollar limit, specking out what they're bidding on is not a bad practice, because it puts us in a bad situation here. We're not comparing an apple and an orange. We've got, we've got different species here. One's doing a more complete job just because he did a better job doing it, and I'm not opposed to, to the middle quote, don't get me wrong. I just think we're not doing a disservice by doing that. The second question I have is, was there any dialogue, or can there be any dialogue with, uh, with our new potential vendor of fire service for color schemes and things? Just because we have a building painted a certain way right now, may not be branded or such to, uh, West Suburban in a new world on January one. This is, if we're going to paint it anyway, let's paint it in a color scheme that might look forward, not just necessarily what we have, or at least engage the chief in a discussion.
Administrator Colander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember DeLuca. Um, I could certainly ask, uh, Chief Lure, you know, does this kind of match with, you know, the theme that you guys are looking at doing? Um, I have no problem with that at all. Um, and see what his in.
Yeah, he might say, I don't care.
Because my, I'm going to speculate, I don't know for sure, that Chief Dennison has probably talked to him about this. But I can confirm that and I can ask him.
And also, while I appreciate what you're saying, remembering that we're responsible for that building and it's in the middle of our downtown. So how it looks does matter, at least to me. You know, it's in the gateway of our city with our electronic sign, and, uh, they'll be renting the building from us for a dollar, and we're responsible for the outside, so.
Yeah, we theoretically paint whatever we want, it's our building.
Right, and I think what we're doing is a huge increase. The colors and the two tones, and I think it's going to clean up that area up, it'll look nice.
I know.
Oh, sorry, I thought you had.
No, I was.
Any other discussion, questions, thoughts? Um, so staff is looking for a recommendation, then, uh, anyone willing to make that recommendation? To approve the bid from Mike Johnson?
I'll make that ma- rec- I'll make that recommendation to approve the bid from Mike Johnson's painting.
Thank you, Councilmember Birak. There is a motion to approve, um, the bid for Mike Johnson Painting LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the exterior painting of the Maple Plain Fire Sp- Station to be paid with capital improvement funds from the general fund by Councilmember Birak.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, five to zero. That is it for new business to come before us this evening. Uh, next we will begin with our council reports and other business. Who would like to kick us off tonight? Councilmember Francis?
I'll kick us off. Uh, attended workshops and had a rebranding meeting. A lot of stuff going on. Learned a lot about the fire consolidation and what all is involved, and I appreciate all the work that has been done by both West Suburban, as well as our Maple Plain firefighters and the Fire Commission. It's not an easy task. And we're on a tight timeline to get it done, and it's also a very exciting time for our city. So I'm looking forward to all of that. Uh, we kicked it off with a joint council meeting with the City of Independence. And it was good to see all the firefighters that were in attendance from both departments. So it's just, it's, it's been an exciting month, and we, then, we follow that with the budget, which isn't so exciting, but necessary. So I've also attended Rotary a couple times, um, heard from the district governor. Which I didn't know there was such a position, so I, it's been a month of learning for me. And I'm excited for kids to be back in school and fall in the air and pumpkin flavored everything. And I'm excited for kids to be back in school and fall in the air and pumpkin-flavored everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis.
Sure.
Councilmember Vizio.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say I enjoyed yearly night to unite, going and visiting. Well, there's one I always go to in our neigh- my neighborhood, and then I was thought, since this is my first year on council, I was going to try to go to the other parties. I hit to one other one, so. Tried to make another one, but they had just shut down. But it was really nice to kind of get to the other side of the city that I don't go to very often, because I was visiting one of my friends. And it was nice to visit with them, uh, these new people, and get to know them and talk to them as well. So it was kind of fun. Chamber of Commerce was really fun this year, uh, month, month, Lord. We had a potluck in Veterans Memorial, which is nice. I would say just kind of be comfortable and just get to talk and not worry, have an agenda, per se. So that's kind of fun. That kind of was fun. It was nice. Good food had by all. With the joint meeting last Thursday, I did not attend Watershed, so I don't know if that's any report there, so I am sure I will have plenty to report for next month on Watershed, not to worry. And I echo Connie, it was nice to have that joint meeting and see everybody and learn more about our joining of the fire district, and I found it interesting that in our monthly magazine that we get that they had talked about, a little bit about cities doing a joint, joint protection jurisdictions or JPAs as well. So it was good to know that we're in vogue, so to speak, here in Maple Plain. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vizio. Councilmember Birac?
Well, I was just going to touch back on the joint council meeting. The one thing that comes to my mind when I, this whole consolidation is, do we put the cart before the horse? I think we actually have the opposite. I think we have the horse before we got the cart. Fire Department's ready to go, and now we're the ones scrambling to make it happen. So I think it's a way that the future is definitely leaning towards, and it's a good move. Night to unite was great. I enjoy getting out, meeting residents, just trying to engage. Getting public engagement sitting up here is definitely a challenge, but it's a two-way street, so I have to meet, make sure I'm meeting that street that way. And, you know, we got Battle of the Badges coming up. So I'm looking forward to that. Had a little good fun between the fire department and the police department, so we're going to have a good time tomorrow night.
Thank you. Councilmember Birac. Councilmember DeLuca?
Well, a month filled with a lot of workshops and, and work, and I wanted to comment about the the workshops we've had about our public spaces have really helped inspire me. I think I appreciate the dialogue we've had as a team around our public spaces, and I wanted to publicly thank our citizens who got involved in the process. We put together a citizens advisory group, and we walked the parks, and Kevin, thank you for your time in doing that. And we've walked through each of the parks with the council. I think we've come up with some good recommendations, and I look forward to staff bringing that back to the council in the next few months where we can start seeing the tangible changes to our public spaces. That is who we're known for, is our public spaces. And it just warms my heart to think through that. Heavy emphasis this month, as we've talked about on fire-related information in the workshops, and the work with the fire relief and our joint meeting. I'm encouraged by that direction. Councilmember Francis and I have a meeting later this week with the Relief Association Board to continue the work. There's a bunch of pieces that have to be done there. Our relief president, Justin McCoy, has done a marvelous job leading that effort and getting ready for this. And I'm very, very comfortable that we'll have all the pieces in place, meeting the deadlines that we need to, to move over these at the end of the year. And a reminder, for those of you that are watching, September twenty-second will be the next council chat. I'm sure Mayor will talk about hers in a moment. But the next council chat I'll be doing at four P.M. on September twenty-second. Happy to talk to anybody about anything.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLuca. August, there was a lot going on, some fun annual events, and then some meetings as well. Was able to attend the Minnesota Mayors Association meeting. We were working on planning for our annual meeting and really just working on communications, and we're all sharing about the challenges we're facing within our cities, whether large or small, with budgets. And just how challenging that can be. Was able to attend the farewell lunch for investigator Cody Thompson. We were sad to see investigator Thompson leave. We're grateful for his eight years of service, and we wish him and his family the best as they begin this next chapter in another state away from us. And again, just thankful for the footprint and the touch he has left here in our community and all the work he's done. Was able to attend the Maple Plain Historical Museum Ice Cream Social. It was their largest attended ice cream social since they started that. It was a beautiful day. Just again, just a reminder of why, what makes Maple Plain, Maple Plain and the community and gathering there. And I know I saw Councilmember Birac and our Vizio, and I think there was a ton of people there, so it was super fun. I had the privilege of attending the Polo Classic. It was their thirty-sixth year for doing this, and I was, had the privilege of doing the honorary ball drop. So that was a fun event to mingle and network, and again, to also spend time with our first responders. Both West Hennepin Public Safety, Maple Plain Fire, and West Suburban were all there, so huge thank you to them as well. Chief DeRose and some of the officers and I were able to attend the Honor the Blue event in Delmo. Again, just a great opportunity in today's environment to publicly thank and acknowledge all those who are serving and protecting our communities, um, twenty-four, seven. Was able to attend Night to Night. It's always one of my favorite nights to be mayor. It's just fun, being invited into different people's yards and visiting and mingling, and saw many of you there as well. I was able to attend all six registered parties in Maple Plain. A special thank you to the hosts who all stepped forward to do that and to invite us. And again, to West Hennepin Public Safety and Maple Plain Fire for being present at all of the parties, not just in Maple Plain. They had a very busy night and made sure not to miss a party. And, and I don't know if we've talked about this yet at council, but recently Maple Plain was named the second safest city in the state of Minnesota. And that is just kudos to our staff and to our residents and just an involved community and community policing and just something to be very proud of. So thank you to all of them for their service and for neighbors for watching out for one another, too. As Councilmember Francis talked about, Rotary was a busy month this month, and always a joy. We have a service project coming up soon. Councilmember Vizio hit on the chamber picnic. One fun fact about that is the Minnesota Beef Council, while they do not sell beef there, they provided steak tips for lunch and gave us a little lesson on beef and grilling. And then we also had our newest member, Mid Country Bank, was there as well. So welcome them to the chamber and glad to see them become part of the community. As I think everyone has touched on, the joint council meeting last week was a very memorable meeting for everyone. And just the symbolism of being there, both cities together, presenting a unified front, working together, looking forward-thinking about our future, about our city to ensure that we have public safety, and not just public safety, but the best public safety that we can provide for our residents. And a huge shout out to the three Maple Plain chiefs, Dennison, McGinty, and Cowser, and to relief president, Justin McCoy. Those four have been doing so much behind the scenes that we can't even begin to understand that, but appreciate their leadership and guidance of their teams through that, and Chief Luer for, through West Suburban. And just really looking forward to all of them to lead and guide us on their end as they move ahead with the consolidation. And for us, we'll keep things moving with the boring paperwork and all the legal stuff while they get to play and train and have fun together, and their family grows. Last week was able to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Board Meeting, and again, it's just such an honor to represent Maple Plain and small cities as we work together throughout the state of Minnesota, and again, working on budgets. Good news is, at that meeting, dues increase will not be more than five percent. So we do know that much about the budget. That was direction we gave, and then there'll be more with the budget to come. Today was the interactive council, interactive chat with council, formerly known as muffins with the mayor and cookies with council. And it was just a nice informal time. There's no agenda, there's no program, there's no, you know, formalities. Everyone just speaking together, taking turns, listening to one another. And I'm grateful to each person who showed up and was engaged today, because that's what makes us better, is when we are engaged throughout the entire process and throughout things going on in the city to keep us informed, and also helps to dull the rumor read, which I know can be exciting, but we'd like to not have those. And then just want to remind everyone, Councilmember Birac brought up tomorrow night, Battle of the Badges will be at six-thirty right here at Veterans Memorial Park on the Don Timpe Field. Umpire Blue Lou will be there. If you don't know who he is, Google him. You'll be surprised. Concession stands will be open. Tracy will be making her renowned pork burgers will be for sale, and then we'll also be collecting food for the food shelf. So come on out and cheer on all the hometown heroes, and you can decide if you're going to sit on the police or fire or somewhere in the middle. Also a fun event that's coming up Wednesday morning, the twenty-seventh at ten A.M. Our police chief and fire chief, so Chief DeRose and Chief Dennison, will be leading storytime at the Maple Plain Library. I had the opportunity to do that last month, and they asked me to come back this month, and I said, hey, why don't I try and get some new people? And both of them said yes. So again, we have some of the best, and they are willing to do that, and they'll be there Wednesday. So come and watch them read stories at ten A.M. if you want. And just a reminder and a shout out to McGarry's as well. The Gulf Charity Fundraisers Classic had to be canceled last Monday, again, because Battle of the Badges was canceled because it was so wet. So that has been rescheduled for September fifteenth. So there'll be a shotgun, AKA siren, start at one-thirty. You'll have an opportunity to come and visit with first responders and the teams and purchase raffle tickets, if you like, out at Pioneer Park on September fifteenth. If you need more info, you can talk with James at the pub, or you can ask me, and I'll try and help you as well. So again, August was a fun month. There was a lot of different things going on and really just great reminder of our small-town community and the joy that we have when we're together. So that's all I have. Staff have anything? Okay, any other business to come before us this evening? Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Francis?
I'll second.
Second by Birac. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned at eight-twenty-two. Thank you, Mayor.